Yeah, we don't have our clerk.
She's in the back.
Yeah. Oh, she is. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Chesapeake Beach, Maryland Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting of August 27, 2025. We are going to call the meeting to order. And roll call, please. We'll start at my left, my right.
Rachel Weaver here.
And I'm Cindy Greenold.
Mary Sue Grisman.
Christopher Spott.
And Madam Clerk, please, for the record, Considered Commissioners Brown, Reckay, and Han are absent tonight. Okay, and if we could stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It stands one nation under.
It is the ball.
Okay. On agenda item number three, the approval of the August 27, 2025 Planning and Commission Agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, any changes? All in favor? Aye. Okay, it's been approved. Number four, approval of the minutes of the July 23, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Any second?
I'll second.
Any changes or questions? No issues? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any public comment? We see nobody in the audience for a public comment. And if I might suggest, anybody who's watching a streaming, I would recommend if you would like to attend next month's meeting, we will probably have a public hearing on signage, so we would like to offer anybody to come up and give us some comment on our agenda item for next month. Okay, number six is old business signage, our old friend, and we're getting to the finish line here because it's really coming along. Let's go ahead and quickly, okay, now, we've got, of course, this memo, so everybody get your memo close at hand here, and as you can see, Ms. Franklin has made a few changes. Ms. Franklin, would you like to go over, please, with us a little bit about what the changes would include and anything else you'd like to say about the work you've been doing, which I say is a great job, Ms. Franklin, on the signage. You've done an admirable job trying to put all of our ideas together, and I think it's really looking tight. I think it's really looking complete. We're, as I say, getting down to the final stages of completing this draft ordinance. So go ahead and tell us what you'd like to share with us on your changes with the sign ordinance.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I think everyone's worked really hard the last several months to get this to where it is. And so there were two, technically four or one, however you see it, minor changes between what you received last week and what these two additional pages you're looking at today, which is that an item G residential districts permit required. There were still four items that were actually exempt signs, so I've just removed them. And so if you look at, you know, your memo has two pages attached to it, and that's items A, B, H, and I are actually exempt, and so they just needed to be removed from that section. And then I think the larger question that has kept coming back up is how the ordinance itself is organized. And one of the sort of key things for the Planning and Zoning Commission has been, how can we organize this in a way that is easiest for folks who are needing to use it to be able to understand and use it? And so I have sort of proposed a way that I think structurally is helpful. You guys are closer to the, I'm a resident, I just picked this up, and does this make sense to me, right? So I think it's worth having that conversation this evening. I think it's mostly in good shape. There's a couple of things, which is area of sign, general regulations, and temporary signs that in the document you have, they're further down, because the purpose was to try to have prohibited signs and exemptions at the top. But I think with regard to area of a sign and general regulations, those should be above exemptions, because even exempt signs have to comply with those regulations. And I think temporary signs from a, I want to do a temporary sign, do I have to read all these permit required signs first, right? Can I just read this temporary sign section? Putting that up higher is what I'm advising. I look forward to your thoughts on the best way to organize it for next month.
Okay. All right, so the organization we're going to come to at the, probably at the end of our discussion, let me just go over quickly what we will change tonight, so that we might have a little more time to discuss signage now. We are going to put number two on old, on new business, discussion of home occupation, on hold until next month. We have a few things to clarify. So not that what you read was going to go to waste, we're going to just clarify a few issues before we continue with that discussion. And of course, it'll be nice to have a few commissioners here who live in some of the areas that are going to be, you know, subject to some of these home occupations, so I'm just as happy to hold off on that. So we're going to hold on number two. That'll give us a little more time on number one, old business. So if we go back to the beginning on signs and we've looked at, you've all read the things in green and noticed that any changes have been included in here, and we've done a great job of, I think, tweaking, like, for example, function and purpose, A1, I think that is a really beautifully concise and usable function and purpose, and I don't think anybody here, if anybody has anything they want to change on that, please let me know now, because I want to go through it page by page until we get through to what the addition or changes are that Ms. Franklin gave us. So that'll be in, you know, the following pages. But let's start in the beginning and kind of go through it, because as I say, next month, I want to have a public hearing, tweak it one last time, and then send it on to our town council if we go ahead and motion to approve it. Okay, so signs perform an important function in that they communicate, identify, and promote properties, businesses, services, residences, events, and other matters of interest to the public. Additionally, signs contribute to the physical environment and aesthetics of public spaces in the town of Chesapeake Beach. The purpose of this section is to ensure fair and consistent regulation of signage in the town of Chesapeake Beach, so they promote the public health and health safety and general welfare. Now, where I have a problem is on number two. Number two is no sign shall be erected, hung, placed, or painted in any district except as here and after provided. Do we not want to take that out of function and purpose and put it into applicability? Would that be more of an applicability statement? It just seemed like it doesn't fit with what I just read with function and purpose. Is anybody in agreement with that?
I am.
Because I want that beautiful statement to stand alone. I know all of you had a part of that, and it just seems to really work well. It's one of the better ones I've read. I've read a lot of them. But I don't like this, no sign shall be, I don't like then all of a sudden this negative thing coming out, no sign will be around. I want it being put down under the, does anybody see what I'm saying? Do you all think that's an appropriate situation? Yes.
Yes, and I agree with you. The only thing that sort of occurred to me, when we talk about signs contribute to the physical environment and aesthetics of public spaces, it's also the private spaces, because, you know, when we talk about the real estate signs and we talk about other signs, so I just thought maybe that should be added there.
I thought we had talked about this before and why is public spaces, because those are public facing versus if you say private, that's like interior in your home, and we're not.
Oh. And that could be, it just sort of, maybe it hit me anew a different way.
So it's how you look at the term public spaces, and I think that's a very appropriate. When you start saying public and private spaces, you're thinking of secret, you know, signage somewhere in a dark closet or something.
And that's fine. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so that's a good question, and I think we have a great answer. And anyway, so Ms. Franklin, do you think there's any reason why we can't move number two down under B, applicability?
I don't. I think in applicability, the statement in applicability.
Say that again three times really fast.
Are very similar, so you could frankly just replace the applicability statement with that one. Or you can keep, so the applicability statement is the one that exists in your code today, so you could just delete two.
So you agree that number two and then the blurb under applicability is pretty much the same thing? Is that what you're saying? That two and all signs must comply with all the regulations contained herein irrespective of whether or not a permit is required. Is that, are those two pretty much the same?
They're pretty much saying the same thing.
Is everybody okay with eliminating number two, or do you think we need to reconfirm that it's also no sign shall be erected, hung, placed, et cetera? I mean, do we need that extra oomph in there, or what do y'all think?
I like extra ooms.
She likes extra ooms.
But I do feel when it talks about the painted, erected, hung, placed, or painted, it's sort of, it takes away any potential ambiguity doubt in someone's mind.
That, you know, any modifications of signage, you know, are also an issue.
Maybe we'll make it number two under B applicability, and that first statement will become number one.
There you go. Any disagreements with this idea, guys?
I like them.
Okay. Be nice over here. I'm going to watch you two over here. Then we have, then we have C definitions, and as you can see, there were a lot of definitions in green that were maybe changed a little bit, added, whatever. And they're very complete, as I went over this list as well. I can't think of one other possible type of sign that we didn't include that would be appropriate for the town of Chesapeake Beach. You know, certainly you're going to have other kinds. It might be for a larger town like Annapolis, whatever. But for us, I think we've got a very complete, and we have, as Commissioner Brown has indicated, we don't want to put a definition in here that we don't then see in our code, and we see all of these. I've made sure that we see all of these at least one time. So that was a very important thing, and I think that's a very positive thing, that we're being as correctly edited as possible here and making sure that people aren't reading things that aren't needed. Any questions down on this end? No? Any issues? Okay, what about any of the, has everybody read all of these definitions and you're all happy with the way they sound? To me, they, I think you, I think they've done, you've done a great job defining, I think. On number 30, temporary signage, did we want to indicate where to go for a temporary sign? Did we want to say, please see such and such section for temporary signage?
We can.
I mean, maybe make it kind of like a table of contents as well. So how does everybody feel about adding that to definitions? But then that means we probably would do that to every one. Do we want to indicate to each one of them where it's located? For example, what was snipe sign? Well, where is that at? Well, it's on, you know, blah, blah, blah. Do we want to, I mean, once we start, we don't want to just do it for temporary and not for snipe signs and.
Well, temporary does have its own, like, section, and none of the others have their own sections. Like, do you know what I mean? So I don't think you necessarily have to,
Okay.
go into it. Temporary feels like it.
So it's different. So when you see vehicular sign, you don't need to go, okay, this is, you know, this is yay or nay on vehicular signage. Okay, so you have number 23, portable sign. Okay, I'm a little confused here. 23 portable, okay, you have portable sign, so should we do it for portable sign and temporary sign? Because those are also two major, you know, we have portable sign has its own section too, sort of, right? Portable signs and temporary signs have portable, have their own, do we do it for like the major?
So portable doesn't have its own section.
Yeah.
It has its.
Okay, so you would not consider that the same as temporary signs when it comes to?
Temporary signs is a letter designation, right, like that top
Okay.
level. But if you want me to refer each, you know, tie each sign to a section, that's something I can do. I would want to do that at the final draft piece.
Of course.
I mean, if we're talking about readability, like you said, the people that are actually reading it, I feel like that, I mean, that's even more helpful, especially since we're putting the definitions at the beginning, so.
I'm thinking it become a twofer, you know, you've got your definitions, plus you've got kind of a.
It's a cross reference.
A cross reference, yeah. So I'm thinking, what do you think about that? Is it going to be too confusing?
My only worry is ever, like, what happens as things change? And like, I guess like that forward thinking is always what worries me, where it's like, are you.
Setting up more complications for the future.
As things evolve.
But as we make changes or amend this, then the whole thing would have to change, and the whole section would probably have to change.
Can I make an alternate suggestion that we talked about in the past but hadn't gotten to, which is, instead of doing it in definitions, that there's, we take the terms that are defined without the actual definition, and we put them in a table. And then that table has the references in it, so that then if you are making a change to the sign ordinance, you'll automatically want to check the table, because it's clear that it has those references, instead of, oh, let me go into the definitions and look.
So would that table be in the front? That people would access things, you know, okay, okay, after definitions, oh, here's the table, now I know where to go for temporary signage.
From a functional standpoint, and I would definitely defer to Madam Clerk, because she might know more about how, is it Munich Code or whatever, general code handles things like when we have a table or some kind of PDF, it is, it's actually, it's in the back, but also when you're online, you have to click to get through to it and have it pop up.
Yeah.
So.
Could we just have a, this might sound interesting, a table of contents or a, not even a chart, but just a table of contents, lists of, you know, the basic, the big ones, you know, maybe not where, well, I mean, you know, even EMCs or whatever you want to call them, that should have its own, if you want to go to EMCs, go to this section or go to that page or whatever.
General code, like if you print out the code from general code, you get that table of contents before every section. Does that make sense? Like, if you look at your zoning.
Yes, yes. Yes, but it's not, but it's not going to include all the different parts of the signage, is it? Like, well, I mean, only if, let me see here.
Anything that has a letter designation, so the stuff in my.
A letter.
That's listed.
Okay.
That's what's going to.
Okay, the, okay, there you go. Well, I'm good with that. I guess that's, I guess that addresses everybody's issues, because of the changes. And then it addresses the fact that we have something for them to use for a cross-reference, you might say.
You want, do you want to do the table?
Yeah, the table, I think. Does everybody agree that maybe the table at the back might be the simplest?
Well, I do think it's a good idea, because you're right, you've sort of done, you've pre-gamed kind of like the next revisions that you might have to do, because you've already got things cross-referenced. So I think it makes any future changes, you don't have to recreate that particular.
That's the whole thing, yeah, because I think that's an excellent point. We don't want to have to recreate a lot of time and effort from, for Madam Clerk over here. Okay, so I'm, if you don't mind making that chart up, maybe that's another cross-reference for everybody.
Yes, and that's the kind of thing I wanted to just wait till we were.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I'm just typing.
Okay, so if everybody is happy with the definitions, notice that free standing on number 15 is, you've got, you've got it broken down, A, B, and C. On number 20, off-premises sign, a sign which directs attention to a business, commodity, service, entertainment, home occupation, or other activity not conducted, sold, or offered on the same lot. Is that clear that if, so if you're on two lots put together, it's okay, it means basically the same thing. You could advertise on this lot, but it would, it wouldn't, it would be permitted, because you have, sometimes we'll have two lots for a business. I bet you, you know, there are some businesses that have two lots put together. Would that be confusing to somebody, oh, well, I have two lots and I want to advertise, you know, my business, and it's on that other lot? Is that a problem, or is that an issue?
I don't think that's an issue. Generally, with regard to how we treat lots as they come in for a zoning permit, right? If you own, you know, some of these lots are very, very small. If you own four lots and your house is on most of them, or even if your house is on one of them, we consider it to be.
But you will consider that as one big, okay. Because this is a funky town with the way lots have been put together, and it's just, it's interesting.
If someone owns the one in between, then now you're an off-premises sign, but if you own both.
Then you would be considered off-premises, yeah.
Right.
Okay, all right, so if everybody's good with that, and I, if you have any other questions, issues, please let me know now. If not, let's go to D and. And so far, we're going in the order that you're expecting us to go in, as far as what your thoughts were with the organization.
I have not changed the order.
You've changed it. You haven't changed it a lot.
I have not changed it. I was recommending a change, but that doesn't mean you guys have to make a change.
So on D, prohibited signs. There is a lot of change, as you can see with green, the green wording means that she's made some changes or amended it somehow. And to me, if anybody's read this and thought it looked good, I mean, it's, the only thing on R, vehicular sign, do you want to include an S to make it conform to the one above and the other ones? Do you want to add an S to that? On vehicular signs.
Yeah.
Not that it really makes a big deal, I guess. And on J, commercial signs advertising a business in any strictly residential zone excluding exempt signs. So you're talking about areas, do we need to identify which ones are strictly residential zones? Do we need to spell that out?
This is one you guys have kind of discussed extensively, and I don't think that it needs to be spelled out. We could change strictly to solely residential zones, that, you know.
I think solely is a little more specific, don't you guys, than strictly? If you don't mind, does everybody have a, is okay, okay to change strictly to solely? I do like that word better, and I think it makes it a little clearer. Thank you. I think that probably makes me feel a little more comfortable there. Okay. If there's nothing else on prohibited signs, we go to general regulations. Now, you had moved in your, in your recommendation for a restructuring, you moved area of sign to before general regulations.
So right now, it reads prohibited signs and exemptions, and I'm recommending that area of a sign and then general regulations go between prohibited and exemptions. Is that right?
What did you just say? You said,
So.
you have prohibited signs, area of a sign, general regulations, and exemptions.
So right now, on the document, the bigger document you had with your packet,
Yeah.
after prohibited signs is exemptions.
Yes, 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 yes.
And part of this was that you and I had kind of talked about how there's general regulations at the beginning of exemptions.
Yes.
And it seems like we're being repetitive, and that was why I sort of reevaluated the order and recommended a different order, so it might be worth talking about, you know, if we're going to move general regulations up above exemptions, then we would also move this section that's within exemptions, right, under just general regulations. It was repetitive for the purpose of making it easy for someone looking for exempt signs, but if we move it above, then we don't necessarily need to be repetitive.
Okay, so if you notice at the bottom of page seven is the word exemptions. And actually, what you want to do is you want to move general regulations in front of that, because people have to understand what the nature of an exempt sign would be. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and there's more general regulations later in the ordinance. I want to combine those, I want to combine those two things and put them above exemptions.
Yes. So, and then we've defined exemptions. It's allowed, a sign allowed without a permit. Is that clear enough, do you think, where we say number two? We don't have the word, well, let's see here, how do we have exemptions? You have exemptions by itself, where you have E exemptions. But do people understand that when you see the word exemptions, that it means, that's what exemption means, allowed without a permit? Because it looks like with number two, when you go on page eight, you don't have the word exemption. I mean, we, we need to combine, I think it's, well, okay.
Yeah, so I think when we move general regulations, I think you're correct. When we move general regulations out, right, then we can just move allowed without a permit, so exemptions, colon, allowed without a permit, and then this list is provided below.
Can you, can you put signs allowed without a permit? Can you add the word signs allowed without a permit? I think just to make it real clear what exemption means, exemptions, colon, signs allowed without a permit, and then we include, of course, all of the things in green there until we get to the area of sign, which really hasn't, that's the one issue that really hasn't changed, is the area of the sign. We really haven't changed any of that, which is kind of interesting.
I think we've talked about, you guys have talked about it.
We talked about it, but we came back to the same thing. So then if we get to G, this is where we see the change in the memo.
I've got a question on G. And maybe it's just because too much coffee, not enough coffee, but when we talk about, which one? When it says permit required, official traffic signs and other federal, state, and local?
That's, that's what's, that's what we're, that's what.
Okay, so explain, explain this again, now that we're here.
Okay.
Go ahead, explain what we've figured out.
Finished my note about what to do above, and now I'm going to explain. Okay, so the, what happened was, I didn't catch, right, a temporary exempt signs that were in the general regulations as needing a permit, or sorry, they're in general regulations as needing a permit, a residential district's permit required. And so when I talked with the chair, she noticed that we found the four that were relevant and deleted them. And so that's, we deleted A, B, H, and I, so if you take your 10 and 11, page 10 and 11 that's in your packet, and replace it with 10 and 11 that was attached to the memo, it should look right. Because you're.
Okay.
Your memo 10 and 11 should have strike-throughs through those. Yes, it does, okay.
Oh, oh. Yeah. Okay.
So that's, that was the confusion.
I thought, I know we have some powers, not that much.
But it should, they should still line up, if you want to literally replace them in your packet, so that you can follow.
Okay, so has everybody seen what Ms. Franklin was just talking about with? Does it make sense to everybody what? Now, if everybody goes through all of G, and if you can look at the memo and just line it up and make sure that everything looks somewhat what you were hoping to see. Are you figuring this, this is all looking okay to you? Okay, good. Okay, when everybody's kind of. Okay, when everybody's kind of gone through that a little bit, because I know that just popped on you tonight. Um, but it was one of those clarifications we needed to have. Anything about G that you see, that you think we need to change? Modify, what do you think? On, on I, when it says no trespassing signs or signs, it's kind of confusing. Is it no, no trespassing signs or is it no tr, no?
Oh, I was deleted because it's permitted as an exempt sign.
Oh, that is correct. Yes, I do see that, yes. So we're not going to, we're not putting, where are we putting, let's see here.
It falls under exempt. I think it's, it falls under exempt because size, but we might have called it out specifically. Let me check.
But when we put it back in, I'm still with the question.
No, we're not, we weren't putting it back in, we were taking it out.
And we're not going to put it in, we're not going to put it.
Because I think it's already somewhere.
Any on premises sign that has a total area of less than four square feet. Um, so your no trespassing sign is going to be that size. So it would be exempt.
Right, it, it's going to be exempt, but what I'm saying is the way it's written.
It's coming out.
But it's deleted, so.
But are we not going to put anything back into ex?
What she's saying, if we're saying.
Because they're exempt.
Put a certain, you can put a sign, this is the only one that's really talking about content of a sign versus. You know what I mean? Like you can put up a sign that says no trespassing and that would just be allowed. You can also put up one that says welcome home or like whatever, you know what I mean? That's all.
And I think it's kind of hard because sometimes we're zooming in and sometimes we're zooming out. And so it's going from the specific to the very general and.
Yeah.
And I think what we're saying is that it's, it falls under the general rubric.
So it doesn't need.
Doesn't need to have a separate starring role, a cameo.
Okey doke, no cameo is allowed. Okay, very good. All right, any other questions about G? Uh, we go to H. H is. H is um commercial districts permit required.
Okay, so this is, okay, what's this?
Does anybody have any questions about number one, H1, on premises signs, A and B?
Feels like there has to be a way of making that language clearer to a layperson.
I've thought that so many times and this is one of the sections in the old code that I, I just couldn't, I wanted to change up too, but. I don't want to make it so that it's not going to pass muster with the legal department. Um, but to me, it's a little muddy and I don't know if it's just me or I can't read, whatever. I don't know.
Well, it sort of reminds me when I was trying to read um environmental statutes.
Yeah.
Except for here and after and I'm wondering if just subsection G is just what we just discussed. And I wonder if um when it's finally done, you could maybe put in parentheses, C pages. So see, people know it's just the G proceeding. This.
You're talking about A, what are you talking about?
You're talking about one A, right?
Uh huh, we, on, under H?
Yeah. Well, what is muddy for you? What was muddy for you?
I was just concerned about um. Oh, okay, so I see what you're saying. Okay, so you're saying what, what's muddy is, okay, you got to go to subsection G, you got to go back here to look for this. And it, it just seems like we're not making a definition here. We're just giving people to go, another reference point to go back somewhere else.
Which is what codes do all the time, unfortunately.
And it makes everybody go crazy because we're flipping and it, you know, with the computer, it's a little easier, but. I wanted to avoid that in this, but um I guess there's no way to make this less cumbersome.
I can put a parenthesis to say residential districts permit required. Right, so you're in section eight, so now you know what that is called, right? And you go up the one, you know, oh, okay, if I can put it in a residential district, then I can put it in a commercial district.
Ah.
Hmm, hmm hmm.
Yeah, that might help.
That's, that's what it's saying.
A little more descriptive.
I see what you're saying, yes. Maybe that would be clearer. Maybe that would clear it up right there for me.
People go subsection G where?
Or maybe I actually say, all signs permitted in residential districts permit required comma subsection G, so that they.
So they, they would, they would know the rest subsection, maybe identifying with some, maybe that would be a big help. So say that again, all signs permitted.
In residential districts permit required subsection, comma subsection G at the standards prescribed therein.
But for me, I feel like there's a way of making it more clear that it's like. All of the signs. I'm trying to figure out if there's a way of reordering the sentence that makes it make more sense because it's. Because what we're saying is everything that was allowed in section G.
Plus, plus this.
Yeah.
Right.
So everything that, all signs that were permitted in section G. As like, as set forth.
You put the page numbers, like when it's finally all said and done, so that if somebody wants to go back to it, they know exactly where they go.
Well, remember, this will be on the, on, online, so it'll be different in paper than it will be on, so it'll be a little complicated that way.
And I think that the page numbers change as different parts of the codes change. Is that accurate?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think the layperson is looking at that and wading through what the meaning is, which is to say you're allowed to have anything except if we say anything coming up.
Yeah, doesn't.
Like, and that's like a little bit.
Exactly, my point. I, I just.
Yes, so I think in this case, we're, we're talking about commercial signs, right? Where you're expecting a little bit more understanding and you're also having to. Have a little bit more, well, you, you have to anywhere, right? But if we leave this description open, right, if we say just if it's permitted in a residential district, then it's permitted here. They may say, well, it's permitted here under these standards, not under. There's, there's much room for interpretation. We have to tighten up the interpretation.
I, I know it's extra words, but I'm wondering, sometimes do you just repeat what's allowed in G? In.
Commercial, under, under A.
Yeah, and then just add the ones that are additional. I mean, it's repetitive, but the person who's looking for commercial signs, it's not repetitive to them because they're not bothering with the residential.
Absolutely, we can just copy, like copy and paste what's in G and put it in H.
Right.
And then the only caveat I put to that is if you change, when you come back and you amend the sign ordinance. If you amend section H and forget to amend section, amend section G and forgets it, or vice versa, right?
Right.
Then now you have inconsistencies in what's allowed in each zone that you maybe didn't intend to.
But if you were to amend.
I think the other, sort of the other thing, right, is that it's going to be right above it and it's actually pretty short. The reason it looks long and cumbersome to us is because we are amending the existing sign ordinance. So we have to leave in all the strike throughs.
Hmm.
Um, and so it makes it look like the.
There's a lot.
Residential district permit required is a lot, but it's really.
Oh, yeah.
Four paragraphs, maybe?
Could you just say here subsection G with the title and then above, noted above or listed above? Just so they know exactly, does that make sense?
comma above.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think even the words, all signs permitted in residential districts, sub, and then parentheses subsection G.
Above.
Above, whatever. I think when you say at the standards prescribed therein, I, I, that's, that to me is cumbersome. Um, all signs permitted in residential districts subsection G. I, I would think it'd be and the standards prescribed therein instead of at. Should it be at and not and? All signs permitted in residential districts and the standards prescribed therein. Comma, except as otherwise provided in this subs, or maybe I'm reading it wrong. I don't know, maybe I'm reading.
I think it could be at or and.
I think I.
Can it be at or and?
I think, well, I mean.
I think we should pick one, but I think. Well, no, I don't think so, slash and, but I mean. I wasn't, but I'm just not sure that at is the right.
It's not necessarily.
Position.
It's not necessarily wrong because it's like saying at this level, like you're a donor, let's say, at this level, not. I mean, I understand.
And then maybe what I need is a comma after subsection G, comma, at the standards prescribed, okay, it's the comma that I'm missing.
Right, right now it says, all signs permitted in residential districts, colon, permit required, comma, subsection G, comma, above, comma, at the standard.
That's what I needed. I've just divided it off. It's like eating grandma. It's like, let's eat grandma or let's eat grandma.
I say that every minute.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Like, it's a joke. We love that.
I, I'm glad you got that one. Okay, so if we can.
Let's eat, comma, grandma.
Right, 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 yes, I understand. Yes, I, yeah.
It's because.
Yeah.
Commas are always very.
That's why commas are, you know, we got to teach those in school. So all signs permitted in residential districts and then parentheses subsection G, right?
Above.
Above, whatever, comma, at the standards prescribed therein. Except as otherwise provided in this subsection. I'm a little, I'm feeling a little bit more comfortable now, um.
Or could you just say except as otherwise provided below? I mean, I guess you can say the subsection. It just seems like it's more words.
It is, more words. But I think when you use below and above, it gets a little bit.
Yeah, you're right.
You know, you need to kind of.
Don't disagree.
Do I need to, does that mean just be one? Does it mean be one and two? Does it also apply to off premises sign? Like, that's why you want to say in this subsection.
Okay. Got you.
In which case it only applies to, you know, A, B, B1, B2 and not off premises signs.
Makes absolute sense.
Do we need the word provided? Signs for permitted non-residential uses, colon, the aggregate, do we need to have the word provided?
Yeah, I think that might have, might just be how it was written previously, like there was a lot of the word provided.
Yeah, I, I know there were a lot of issues there. I think we need just a, um, a colon after uses or.
Chris and I've already scratched it out.
Detail, but you know, this is a, an important document here. Okay, so signs for permitted non-residential uses, scratch the provided. And then the rest, I think we figured was okay. And is it linear foot or is it linear foot? It's below where it says, um, the area of any free zone shall not exceed one square foot for each lineal. Or I think you can use lineal, but it seems like linear is what I always use with feet.
Linear sounds right.
It does sound right, but.
It does, but I'm not sure if lineal is a.
Could be a building phrase or something, yeah.
Think you can use either. I think at that time that it was written, they chose to use lineal. If we want to change it to linear, I don't think that's a problem.
I think that's more.
Common, I don't think we see lineal very often anymore. Uh, let's go, let's change that to linear, please. Then we go to off premises signs, all signs permitted in subsection G at the standards prescribed therein. And again, comma after subsection G.
I'll just take the same.
Take the same language, okay.
From above.
Then we get into general sign regulations. And a lot of changes there, of course. I don't know, I'm still bugged with this durable material thing, but that's okay. That's my thing.
And the numbering is very, very messy through there, like the new one you added, the illuminated one is number eight, but it's really number three. That'll get fixed in the final.
Number six, I know this sounds really wordsmithy, but I want to, I want to just ask your opinion about the word opinion. It says in number six, it goes all signs, blah, 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 and then it says in the middle, in the opinion of the public works slash zoning. You want to say in the.
Administration, that's still the same thing.
In the, um, as, as determined by.
Hmm, yeah.
I don't want to make anything uh subjective, so I want to make it as determined by.
Yes.
That's okay. If anybody has a question, okay.
I'm on fire today.
Well, you know what? I don't have my, my, you know, my guy here, so I need to take over the job tonight, guys. When you begin the word, such order shall be complied with, that is not really grammatically.
With.
I'm sorry, so if you go underneath where we changed out the opinion word, if you go down to the next sentence. Such order shall be complied with within five days of receipt thereof by the person, blah, blah. Can we reword that sentence so you don't start with such order shall be? I mean, it's.
I'm worried about the with, the dangling with.
Yeah, the.
Not really, well, but.
But noted it is not grammatically, um, it's not a grammatically well-written sentence. Um, the order, let's see here, not the order, but the uh. The.
Could you start with the person, firm or corporation owning shall comply? I mean, could, you could start with.
There, now, say that again.
Well, I'm not really sure, but you could start with the person, firm or corporation owning or using the sign or the owners of the building or premises. Who have received notice of an unsafe sign must comply within five days. I mean, just something like that. I haven't figured out the very last part, but that would get rid of sort of that. Odd entry words.
I guess when we use the word such, we're using it in a legalese form. Uh, this is more of a.
How about this order?
The order.
You say disorder.
Or this order, I mean, but isn't such being used in a legal?
It's, it's, it's designating, I think, this order as opposed to any other order in existence.
It is, I mean, that's the word such is referring to. It just.
Right.
And maybe we should just leave it, um, as I'm thinking such order shall be, but.
It's, it's a very.
It, it, it's not user friendly in the, in the term that, you know, a normal person is going to go such order shall be, eh, okay.
You want me to read your suggestion entirely?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I, I can read the suggestion um that was presented in its entirety, if that would help.
Very good.
So the, the person, firm or corporation owning or using the sign or the owners of the building or premises who have received notice of an unsafe sign. Must comply with this notice within five days.
Yeah, notice, yeah. Do I got better?
Yes, I like that better, actually. You like that, what you just read better? I think it's a little clearer what you just read.
Right, that's what Commissioner Grisman.
Yeah, I agree with me.
You should agree with yourself.
Okay, good, good, thank you. All right, let's turn the page, please, number, page 14. It looks like it's, uh, you know, we don't read anything there. Okay, page eight.
But we like, we like that page.
You like page 14, forget that one. Okay, then page eight, um.
You mean page 15.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's number three, but the formatting won't let me say so right now. I'll fix it.
Becomes number three. Hope that worked pretty well.
Okay, I think number eight. Both of those are very necessary.
I think, I think they're easily understood.
Very easily understood. All right, now if we go to the temporary signs. I assume, are you gonna put temporary as uppercase letters? Or are you gonna put signs as uppercase with it?
So, just for expectations as to how it will look when it's drafted for a public hearing, everything that is green is going to be in uppercase letters. I can keep it in green, too, if that's helpful. So that'll be, because that's all the new text you're adding to the existing document. Then everything that is in black will remain how it is. And everything that is in black with a strike through will stay there with the strike throughs. Since we already did that work, it doesn't make sense to ask the lawyers to do that work again.
Exactly. So when you have one, signs, including temporary signs, aren't we just talking about temporary signs here, or are we trying to make a broader statement other than just temporary signs? Shouldn't we just say temporary signs directing patrons, blah, blah? Or do we need to include, put signs, including temporary? Because we're under the temporary signs category.
Right, yes.
You get what I'm saying?
Yes.
You're seeing it's redundant.
Agreed. They're a little redundant. Yeah. That's right, exactly. So do you see those-
Yes.
Things, okay?
I've got that.
And then, and then, of course, the, on C, we've got church bells in there? What is going on? Signs shall not N O T be permitted for more than 60 days per year. So you added that or changed it, or? See, see under C, see, there was a green N O T.
Yes, I added that because when I was reading it, I realized that right now your regulations actually say signs, signs shall be permitted for more than 60 days per year, so that we're not the only ones who make mistakes.
Now, there is an E I would like to add on temporary signage. Um, and I know we have it somewhere in here, but I couldn't figure out where we had it, that we need to relocate it, but I wanted to put in there, uh, we talked about windy weather. It's here somewhere. So I can't, I, and I tried to look around.
It's under general regulations under exempt sign.
Yeah, it says something about it has to be, um-
Yeah, where was that?
It is-
Standing, it says 15. I think it says it has to be placed on or anchored on the ground. Is that what you're talking about?
It is on page, the top of page eight. Portable signs must be brought indoors when high wind events are forecast. All signs must be properly secured or needed. So these are now going to be applying to everything. Um, they're gonna be general sign regulations.
Okay, so we don't need to put that under the temporary sign regulation because we've got it there.
Right.
But do we want to take E because it's designated as portable signs? We'd want to take that and just put it under? Because you see, under general regulations, 1E, we're just outlining one general regulation for portable signs only. Don't we want to make it look less confusing and put that over under portable signage? You see everybody on page eight where we have 1E? Portable signs must be brought indoors with, when high wind events are forecast.
Where you're referring to where there's portable signs only.
Oh, then take, okay, maybe I'm, so, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm confused. Okay, you're right. I'm thinking temporary signs because temporary signs are also lightweight. I'm thinking tempor, when I'm thinking temporary and portable, I'm thinking lightweight signs that you move around.
I think it's, so because I think we want to use the portable because an A-frame sign isn't really necessarily a temporary sign. That's a sign, you know, that is gonna be out.
It's a temporary sign, but it's also a portable sign.
It's not really a temporary sign because it's gonna be, it can be out all year long. Right? It's, it's part of the exemption.
About, um-
But it still needs to be weighted.
I'm trying to think about, okay, but are there no types of? Okay.
Really, temporary signs would be moved under exemptions instead of being its own section. What it's trying to do is it's trying to fit into the existing structure of the ordinance as it is, and it may be best to just just move it, um, instead of giving it its own section, just slide it under exemptions. And accept that we're gonna have to alter that section of the ordinance as well.
Are there no kinds of temporary signages that we want to have permits for? I know a lot of towns permit temporary signs as well. Did we, I know we decided long ago, we didn't really talk about, I don't think, perm, having permits for any temporary signs. I don't want to be litigated right now, but are, I'm just trying to think, are there any kind of signs that would be? Anyway, I guess not.
As long as it's hard to see until we see like the next version. Since it's hard to see how it's gonna work out until we get the next version of this.
Well, I guess, I, I guess I get confused between temporary and portable because I think a lot of temporary signs are portable. You know, I'm thinking about just the signs that you have on a stick with a little thing and just take it and move it over, you know, you just move them around and there's, so I'm always thinking that temporary signs can als, or should be also portable in a lot of ways.
Temporary banner up, you could have a temporary house.
Yeah.
Yeah, temporary sale.
Yeah.
That is true, but on the other hand, you could have it. You could have it, but it may not be that, and that's why I'm a little-
I think the confusion is that we tried to, to work within what was already here, and we probably should have just said, you know, we gotta, we gotta move all these temporary signs and stick them under exemptions, which, you know, does make exemptions more complicated, right?
Yeah.
But these are really exempt signs, and so unless you want them to be permitted, like as an item two, your A-frames or your T-frames, if you want those to be permitted.
When you say permitted, you mean a permit needed, not permitted.
Yeah, right. Not permitted, but they need a permit.
I personally like the idea of moving them into the exemptions and not requiring permits for them based on the fact that they're small and they're not staying up forever, and like, that just feels like dealing with permits and then, you know, enforcing it.
But they could be up forever if you think the sandwiches or the-
No, because a sandwich sign, if it, it's only a temporary sign if it's not gonna be up for more than 60 days. If your sandwich sign is staying up more than 60 days, it's no longer a temporary sign.
Right, right. Would, would, but I'm just saying, would somebody take advantage of that and say, oh, it's gonna be temporary, and then bam, it stays up all year? And you think, okay, it's had a permit, no.
So the, sorry, the only one that isn't actually a temporary sign that's listed under here is the A-frame or the T-frame. So everything else has, like, under one, it tells you about like the size and how long, it's talking about exhibit shows, events permitted, right? So that gives you a timeframe. Under number two, banners, feather flags, et cetera, they have a timeframe. But B, the A-frame or the T-frame, there's not a timeframe associated with that. So even though it's classified under temporary sign, it does not have a timeframe that applies to it.
So the, I guess the next question is, do we then want to put temporary signage under exempt? Signs.
That makes, I think that seems cleaner than having a section for a bunch of signs that are exempt later.
Because, because real estate signs are really temporary signs.
Yeah.
You've got, all these other ones are all temporary signs. When I, you know, think about it again, yes, it's all temporary. Holiday signs hopefully are temporary.
But we're gonna, but the A-frame ones, where are they gonna go? Those could be both, I suppose.
I think they're, they're also gonna be exempt as long as you only have one of them.
So you would have to give them its own little letter. I mean, it'd have to be separate. So if you're going to take temporary signage and put it under exempt, are you even calling them temporary signs anymore? Or are you just calling them signs that are under 12 feet or some, I mean, would you just need descriptions and not really a term temporary?
So, um, how it will look is that, under exemptions, there will be new ones, right? And it will say, because one is specific, right? Temporary signs directing patrons, members, or audience to temporary events, shows, or events are permitted subject to the following requirements. I think some of these requirements are already involved, so like, if no such signs shall exceed 12 square feet in area, if that's already covered, then I'll believe that. But if it's not already covered, I'll leave it in, right? So this whole little paragraph, eh, 1A, B, C, D will go under there. And then, um, 2 will actually, should actually probably just be moved into, um, commercial signs as number three. And then 2A and B should go as letters in exempt signs. Do you follow that?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Yes. Went out a small thing that seems, so, under 1C, no such sign shall be posted earlier than two weeks before the occurrence of an event which it relates. Signs shall not be permitted for more than 60 days per year, but then a different type of, like, then under 2A where it says banners, feather flags, human signs, inflatable signs, and not to exceed, one thing is, I would say in 14 days where the other one said two weeks, I would just have that like, consistent, one or the other. But also, it does, and not to exceed 30 days per year, and I feel like when you're adding different numbers to different places, that there being like more consistency, it feels-
I think you're so right. Be consistent, yes.
Unless there's a reason for an inconsistency.
I don't see any reason here, unless there's something that we don't know about it. Is there some reason, Ms. Franklin, why we should make banners different than?
I don't think so, but I do want to just have us check exemptions and see if we have other time regulations in exemptions. Because if we do, then we want to make those consistent. So there's real estate signs, they have their own timeline, but that's as to be expected.
Yeah, that's the difference.
So, yes, I think choose one, choose your own adventure here as to which one of these two timeframes you prefer, and then I will make them consistent.
Okay, what does everybody think? Do they want 60 days per year, or do they want 30 days per year? Uh, not to, display periods not to exceed 14 days prior to the event. Okay, which one do we want to go with? Who, what's, what do you think?
I mean, I'm just trying to think about like what events I-
Well, let's talk about Christmas. Um, you usually start in October, about 60 days before Christmas. I'm thinking Christmas.
And I think, then I think it should probably be 60.
So if you want to get on the, you know, the consistent, you know, holiday schedule, usually everything starts two months ahead now. Halloween, you know, eh, you know, Easter, everything's two months, don't you think?
I mean, I feel like just give it the bigger window.
Yeah, just go with the, go with the, yeah. So let's change that. A, change that to the to the, uh, 60 days per year, two weeks ahead, and then 60 days per year.
We're saying two weeks, not 14 days.
Okay. Well, I think we should go with 14 days.
I think that's a little more specific.
It's more, the more specific, I think you should go days and days, but, yeah.
So then we gotta go back here.
Go back and change C.
Weeks to 14 days.
There you go. Okay, that, I, I really like the idea of changing that. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Be agreeing with you?
No, no, it wasn't my idea. I think, you know, I think-
No, I'm just joking.
I think that the more logically set up this is, the better off it's gonna be, so I'm happy.
Makes people less, less antsy if they have to deal with.
Oh, right.
Yeah, and when you're like, well, why is that one and not this? Like, I don't-
Yeah, I think it's- Yeah, right. You have to be consistent and it has to-
I think it's a good idea.
Make sense. Electronic signs, we've all looked at that a thousand times, and I don't, you know, it is what it is.
What's a thousand one?
Thousand one more, but I think there's really not much we can change there. And it was a real reason for the sign ordinance draft is including this huge section in there. We need to make sure it's-
I have a quick question about the, about the electronic messaging signs. Do we have, so are, are there any within these guidelines that we have written, are there any that are going to be in violation when we start?
Say all of them.
Like, are we giving grace period? Are we giving exemption?
Okay, so now we have a, um, if you go to page, where is the grandfather section here? It's on page-
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming signs.
What page?
19.
You'd be jumping ahead, I'm sorry.
Because it's an important point, and you're right about that. But do we need to add the word grandfather? Do we need that in there, or do, you know, what, non, non- Because do people know what non-conforming signs, do they understand that?
So-
They understand grandfather.
What I would say is that grandfathering is what you have now, you can keep doing. That what we're actually saying in the non-conforming is that you can keep your physical sign, even if it's not in compliance, but you cannot have flashing, blinking, you know, you're gonna have to comply
Yes.
with everything else, because you could control that without adding.
Yes, you're right. Okay, so it would not even be considered grandfathering.
Right.
And pretty much every business is gonna understand what a non-conforming sign is, I think.
And the words explain, you know, explanations are good.
Um, so EMC's, um, K, I think is good, Al, uh, I think it's all good. We get to M violations. Oh, actually, did we want to read over the non-conforming sign thing, uh, Chris, that you probably?
And so just, so that is the actual, C is the only one that I sent to the lawyer ahead of time and was like, hey, can you make this how you would want it to look in the end? So.
L, L3C?
Oh, not K. Okay, wait a minute, L.
We're at the non-conforming signs.
Okay. L, L, L. Okay, and that was L3C, you said? Okay. Yeah, it seemed, yeah, it seemed well-written.
My version was much shorter, but-
I think this is one of the most important sections.
And it has to be tight, and if most people don't need it, so, yes.
I wish, whatever, it doesn't. The idea that somebody, that we would put things in place that, the fact of the matter was even when those things went in, they weren't conforming to the regulations of the permit, or, you know, the ordinances as they currently were. It's not like we're like making up something after the fact and then now being like, got you. Like, they never-
They always were.
They always were non-conforming. Not that that matters, but there's a part of me that I'm like, I wish that that was clear, like-
You mean like you-
Yeah, I mean, like, we're letting, but like, even the old ones, you were in-
We could, we could force them to remove them, right?
Yes.
If, if we chose not to take this route, the other, and we've sort of paused on that, that was discussed and happening on that, so.
Man, it's just, I can imagine if I was looking at this and I didn't realize that the things that we're talking about that are non-conforming, if I was just reading it, I'd be like, they're changing ordinances, and now they're acting like they have to file for it after the fact, or like they've made, or it's like even, anyhow, that's, this is more for the public to know if you're looking at this later, we-
No, definitely.
I, I think you're trying to preempt rumbling and rousing, and I don't know how you do that unless you have a preamble of some, like-
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I understand, there's that part of me that it just wants it like on public record, like these things were not.
We can do that in the public meeting, right?
I think signs that have been erected without a permit in violation of this chapter that have been in place for more than two years, that's saying, if you put up a sign and we didn't make you take it away. Yeah, right now, we're, we're gonna figure out how to work with you, so it's almost saying-
It is saying it, just-
You were in violation already.
And I make one change to the attorney's-
My god.
One, one simple little change.
Yes.
The word traveling is misspelled.
Oh.
Oh, that's.
T I A V E L I N G, take an L out of there.
Are you sure?
Yes, I just looked it up again.
Just a second.
Okay, I guess.
The second.
Oh, my spell check is not picking that up.
I am curious though, if somebody had put a sign up, a non-conforming sign up six months ago, then are they getting it torn down?
Oh. Like, because it's, it's, hasn't been here for two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, um, let's see.
Does it mean?
Well, if.
Should it not?
So the purpose of this was so if you, if you're a business and you're like, hey, they're looking at this signs, let me throw in this non-compliant sign real quick.
Yeah.
No, your sign does not, your sign is going to have to comply entirely and you need to apply for a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but how do people, do you think people are trying to beat the clock on this? I mean, is that, is that a problem?
That is not my perception, but I think we, that was the discussion is we don't want, while we're having, and that was very early on discussion, while we're having this discussion, we don't want people to say, I'm going to put in my sign now because they're probably going to adopt this. And so that is why, to my knowledge, right, you guys know more than I do, no one has put in a new non-conforming sign since we have started this discussion. And into that extent, right, if you're going to be putting in a sign, you are supposed to apply for a permit. And so if, if you choose not to apply for a permit, while there's all this conversation about signs happening.
Same with you.
That's on you.
Like, yeah.
Right, if, if, if after this is passed in 60 days, you put in a big EMC that's not compliant, it's not compliant, and you're going to have to be asked to remove it as per the zoning ordinance. Or you can comply with the regulations and get a permit. I think, I think there was a period that the town was without code enforcement and that's what created.
Again, I'm sorry, the.
I think there was a period in the past when the town did not have code enforcement, is my understanding, as to how sort of things happened and didn't get caught at the time. And so that's sort of why.
So the wild, wild west?
I wasn't here, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make things work for everyone.
Okay. Okay, so, so L looks pretty clean. Does everybody agree? Does anybody disagree? If we go to M violations, do we need to be more specific on A? Failure to remove any temporary signs within the time prescribed. Do we need to identify with, you know, by the zoning, do we need to make that a little more specific? Shall result in the town having the sign removed at the owner's expense? In other words, could they say, well, nobody prescribed any time, you know, I mean, do we need to make a little bit more precise?
Put them on notice, you mean?
In other words, when, for a temporary sign, what do you normally do if a temporary sign has been up too long or it's in violation? Do you just give them a notice or what happens?
I, I don't actually do anything.
Not only you. She's got to be out there.
Um, so I have not talked civilly about what he specifically does. I know a lot of places, they're, they're simple throwaway signs, a lot of places just have their public works, pick them up and throw them out. But it's, if it's maybe.
Do we have to, in other words, do we have to tell somebody before we throw them out? Is my, my point.
Doesn't mean you're putting off someone's lawn.
Well, in other words, I'm, I'm thinking of political signs, you know, I mean, after so, they've just thrown them out. Do we need to say that no notice is needed?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, I guess what I'm saying. I'm trying to say, do we need to put that in here that?
They have, they have to be put on notice.
I don't want to say have to go and notify everybody about a temporary sign because then I'll put blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, that's not usually how it works. So result in the town having the sign removed at the owner's expense without or maybe no notice, no, no notice, there are no notice requirements for the removal.
Where is this going? So on one A.
Under enforcement, violations?
Under violations. I don't know. I was going to say no notice is necessary to.
Or is required, the town, the town is not required to provide you notice. You know, or some, it's something like that.
Who's keeping track of how long they've been in violation? It's, I guess the, it's, I mean, it's got to come from somewhere, right? Someone's keeping a tally of.
Could call and say this has been here for so many years.
Thanks from, you know, neighbors or.
The town is under no obligation to provide you with any additional notice or something like that.
Or any sign or is that?
Well, no, just like this is the temporary.
Talking about temporary signs. So it's only.
Aren't we out of the temp?
Yeah, we're under M violation, general regs.
That's a good question. Do we want to put that under temporary signage? I don't know, that's a good question.
But maybe.
I thought violations applied to everything, not just temporary, because temporary was just a section.
Right, so the, the general relate, regulations under violations apply specifically to temporary signs. This is a specific thing you all asked to have included with regard to real estate signs and political signs. Now, is the town going to bill a real estate agent for the five minutes? It might take the guys to pick up their signs. No, but if there is a huge sign that requires them to dig or something, then that's where you're going to see the, the cost. But because this, this was requested to be put in here, and it's not really, and it's not really enforcement because it's not having the property owner do something, right? So under enforcement, you have a sign that's abandoned or otherwise in violation, it has to be removed, not by us.
Okay.
By you. So that's why I put it where it is.
It should be in temporary.
I'm thinking we might want to go back to under temporary.
And put this.
And put it there just to let people, because they're not going to go back here to read this. They have to understand that they're responsible for removing signage within the prescribed ti, uh, time or the town will remove without notice and at, and, and possibly at their expense.
Maybe instead of going in exempt, it would actually go in general regulations, which is going to be above exempt or no.
Okay, you could do it, you could do that in, yes, yes. So in other words, you would put it, if we go back to page, whatever, eight, I guess we're at now. Let's see, we're.
Eight.
Yeah, we're at eight for exempt signs. So if you're back at page eight, you would want to put them in general regulations above exemptions? Or you want to put them under exemptions?
So we just remove general regulations from exemptions.
Well, yes, we did.
If we put this in here, then we have to put general regulations back under exemptions for this one topic. So if general regulations are going to apply to the exempt signs, as in A, all signs must comply with the regulations contained herein, irrespective of whether or not a permit is required, right? That, that applies to exemptions, even when we take it out of exemptions, so.
Okay, so if we put an F in there, because I don't see this as a violation, I see this as just a responsibility that they're not dealing with and, you know, are we going to call it a, give them a ticket for a violation? Probably not, we're just going to take it and throw it out.
Not unless it's extremely expensive to remove.
Yes, uh, yes. Uh, but that would be a permanent sign you would be talking about, right? Or are some of the temporary signs also?
I don't know if you guys have them out here, um, you probably do, when like there's the bigger races, those ones that they, they've got to dig.
Yeah, I know what they are.
And put the, like two by fours or whatever it is.
They had them coming into town.
Like this.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how expensive those are to move, but I assume they have an expense associated with them because you're going to pay tipping fees too, right?
Yes, of course, of course, that's true.
So, um, I think it's worth having in there in case you were in a situation where there was an extreme expense, then it does give the town the ability to bill the person for it. It's probably something that really won't get used unless there's an extreme offense.
Oh, you want to leave one A as it is here, but you also want to go back to putting something in general regulations about it being the responsibility to take this sign out.
What, I think.
Or what do you want to do there?
I think I want to, I, I'm happy with it in violations, though I understand what is being said. Like, I looked at exempt signs, I didn't see anything that said that you were going to throw my sign away.
Yeah.
Right, because that's what's really going to happen.
Yeah, that's going to happen.
Um, so that needs to go, doesn't need to, it could go under general regulations, right? Which is going to be right above exempt. And, and now that I'm saying that, we may want to say failure to remove any temporary signs within a time prescribed shall result in the town having the sign removed and disposed of at the owner's expense. So that it's clear, we're not hanging on to it for you.
And what's going on page, I'll make sure I'm on the right page.
That is going to go.
Page eight?
Um, page, it's probably going to wind up on page seven, because it's going to be a new section called E and exemptions are, is going to be F and all the other numbers are going to trickle down from there.
Do you want to add that exact language on A?
I mean, yeah, I was just going to move the exact language.
Page seven.
So go, so in other words, if you look at page eight, just assume it's going to be on the page before that, because everything's going to move over, but it's going to be up with general regulations, which is currently on our page eight.
But the general regulations in a lot of places, I'm not sure.
Uh, well, I'm talking about the one that's going to be right above exemptions. That's how, so if that's how we're going to choose to, to, you know, outline this thing, so.
Oh, that's right, it's all like the, that's right, that's right. Okay, okay, I got you.
I, I do have a question for the removal of the signs and the town doing it, you know, when, when we see fit, right? So I'm, I'm just concerned about like there being a timestamp, you know what I mean? That we're providing to the homeowner or the business or something like that, because like what you said, they're going to come back and say, I didn't know you, when you were going to, like, I didn't know when you were going to remove my sign, right? Is there any sort of like, because like, I mean, there needs to be a complaint, right? There, or, or someone needs to notice that there is a violation. And then I feel like we need to, right, like show that, well, the, like this day was documented, it's been, it surpassed the days, that's why it's being removed.
So I would say signs on private property, right, are going to go a lot longer.
Yeah.
Than what is actually prescribed, right? And so very likely, there will be more of a procedure for those. Signs that are really on public property, where they're not supposed to be anyway, right? Those are just getting pulled up.
Yeah.
You can complain all you want, but they were in the public right of way, they were there for this long, you knew they were going to be disposed of. I'm sorry that your signs were expensive and we threw them out, but you really knew that when you put them.
We're really not sorry.
Um, I don't know, I don't know, maybe the guys are sorry.
Well, so then there goes back the question, do we need to add that you may not be given notice for its removal? We need to put a.
I think that Commissioner Reisman added that.
Did we add that?
Well, I didn't know that it was in fact added, but I did say the town's under no obligation.
Providing you any notice or something. Like that, you want to say?
I just wrote the town is under no obligation to provide you with any.
I think.
That's kind of folksy, don't you think? I mean, we're not under any obligation.
No, it's precise.
Sounds lawyerly.
The town does not, is not required to notify you of this removal.
All right, you two work out and let me know. We'll talk about it when one of us is the dummy tomorrow.
Funny, you're always the dummy and don't ever forget him. So what do you, what do you, what, how would you say it?
Town is under no obligation. My friend Rachel.
Get it later. Chris, how do you think?
I think this is my obligation.
I, I get it, okay, I get it. I need, where's my Larry when I need it?
Yeah.
Sorry, Larry, come on, come on, speak up.
Yeah.
That is not, okay, you figure it out and you let us know, but. Okay. But just something that i, i, if somebody is just reading that exempt area and that portable, uh, or that, you know, that section, I should say, they will understand that that is their responsibility to remove the sign in a time, in the time noted. Okay, so I think we've really, I mean, is there anything else that anybody has seen in here? The enforcement is pretty much, um, I don't know if you all read it, but it's the three violations by the same entity and our persons. This entity and our persons will not be permitted to display exempt signs within the town for a period of six months. I'm, I'm looking at the last page, 21. I'm just kind of picking out certain things that kind of stick out at me. Again, that is saying exempt signs, but, um, I guess, you know.
Exempt and permitted, permitted remain.
You say that?
Yes, yes, yes. That's a little bit of, are you seeing, are you hearing what we're saying about, it's a little, it doesn't matter. I mean, I think at the end of the day, I think we're good.
Do you want to change it?
Who? Rachel, what are you thinking about this?
After three, so, I mean, because the point is, they're going to get punished, right? You get three, same, and even, even signs that you're allowed to have, you're no longer allowed to have because you've, because I feel like.
No soup for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one I'm not sure the lawyer is going to let stay in there.
Yeah, I kind of was wondering that myself, if like, if you're allowed to put them on sign timeout. And like, especially like they already have permanent signs, what are they going to do? Put a sheet over them?
There will be public shaming, where you hang your signs up.
Just realistically, how are they going to, how are we taking Roland's sign down if they've done it?
It's only for exempt signs. Right? It's not for their.
Don't we mean exempt from permit signs?
Yes, well, that's, yeah, that's what she was talking about, yeah.
So that means.
They would have to go, any of the things that would have been allowed, now they've got to take down their open sign and their.
No, oh, yes.
We have to take down their American flag that we're like, you, like, you're being stripped of all your edibles. Yeah, that one just seems, I don't feel like that's.
The, just the reason, sorry, um, the reason that you all decided to include this was specifically in relation to real estate signs.
Yeah.
Um, regardless, I still think that the lawyer is going to strike this when they get their hands on it. I could be wrong, but maybe the answer to this is to, to just move this under real estate signs for right now and see what happens.
That's what I was wondering too, if we wanted to do that, um, let's move.
We're talking about B, right?
Because we're talking about B, that you do see more violations, I don't want to put any group on the spot, but it, it seems like if there's any violation, the real estate profession tends to violate that rule a little bit more often.
The only ones putting up the signs that frequently, I think.
Right. I mean, and, you know, the question is, is it a big deal in this town? I mean, you know, we don't have a lot of things that are for sale all the time in this town, but if I think we're going to have that, I think we probably should move it. I don't know, is, what do you all feel about that? If we're going to keep B, we should probably move it.
I, I thought it's just to strike it, it seems. I, I think.
I mean, how are we going, yeah, how are we going to?
That feels like just a real mess to enforce, even if the lawyer did let, like, I just like, I don't like having any rules that don't feel enforceable and this feels not super enforceable.
The way you have to look at it, what is enforceable and not, and that really is not.
Why do you think it would be stricken?
Because I, I don't think you can do this. I don't think you can say to.
We strike you out?
Right.
Does anybody have a problem if we strike it?
Well, now that you're saying that we have to strike it, maybe, I'm feeling a little, I'm feeling like I like it a little bit.
I'm not saying you have to strike it, I am not a lawyer.
Saying even if the lawyer would let us, but it doesn't feel enforceable to me. Like, it doesn't feel like the kind of thing that, like, so one of the real estate companies, they put up the temporary signs, but now they have their open sign on their door, they have their American flag, they have their Christmas decorations, those are all exempt signs. And we're going to be like, you gotta take those down because you didn't, you had your temporary signs, like, what? I don't think so. That feels like.
Keeping track of that.
And that, and those signs were not the problem signs, like if anything, then there's like a fine for having done this other thing, but like, I don't know, that just seems.
I'm, I'm, I'm really. I'm, I'm, I'm really.
Yeah. I was just.
I think to your point right now about the fine, right? If it's a consistent problem and they're constantly having to be picked up and being thrown out by Public Works. Then some point Public Works is going to say. This is getting really expensive. Can I do anything about it? Well, yes, you can. You can charge them for it.
You can want them for it?
You can charge them for it. That's the one we were just talking about.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, if you're throwing out signs, oh, and if every week people are spending. Half an hour, eh, which isn't that much, but that adds up.
Adds up, cumulative.
Then, then, then we charge them for that as it's been set forth, but to.
Yeah.
If this other thing feels.
It's the repeat offenders that we're having. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the one bill would probably stop it, even if it's a very small bill, it's an annoyance, so I'm just going to pick up.
Notice that there's a new sheriff in town. I know.
Okay, so we're clear on B then. We're going to keep B then.
Why don't we were.
B after all. Strike, strike, three, we're out. Strike it out. Let's go to the la, uh, page 20, which is the violations. I see we have two E and one A are very similar, but yet different. Um, one A, M1A and M2E.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, now they are. So.
You know, I'm telling you, he's not here. I have to like, I'm, I'm Larry. I'm really Larry in disguise.
I was like, this does not feel like Larry.
Okay, so, yes. Um. I. I think because, now because we're moving one A up to general regulations, it is probably worth. Leaving two E.
Okay.
In enforcement, just so that it is in both places from, I mean, people aren't generally reading the enforcement chapter. That's for us, really.
And do we want to change the word may with will? Under two, I'm sorry, two E, so M2E, you have may be removed. Do you want to make it will be removed? Just so that people have the fear of God.
Oh, yeah, that is.
This is going to be destroyed. Ha, ha, ha.
If we say will though, are we under obligation to do it and will we always do that?
But will may be, may be kind of wishy washy.
Yeah, but wishy washy or not, if we're no, if we can't legally do, like, if we're not. We would be in violation then every time we don't do.
Some could say, well, the town didn't do it, but now I'm suing.
Yeah.
Because it says will.
Town removed my sign. You know.
Upper Marlboro?
No.
Oh.
I'm saying. The town removed my sign and threw it out, and now the town has not removed this other sign and thrown it out. May is, we may or we may not, shall or will is, we have to.
Totally.
And if. You have, you're short staffed or.
How about instead of may, can we put can? Can be removed. I find may just be like, oh, you know, you're a nice guy. We'll let you keep yours up, but you.
Him or us. Basically, yeah. Him means like, you know, didn't you remember fifth grade? You love grammar. Can and may, one is.
Yeah.
Like the town.
But it's.
It's leaving up to us to.
Well, I mean.
May has a specific legal meaning.
All right, there you go.
That's why, you, you use, for, you use may or shall. Um. Right? In the specific legal meaning and may means we might do it and shall means we're going to do it.
Okay, well, that's.
There's.
I shouldn't have said that, I'm sorry.
Very disrespectful. Okay, then everybody is okay with what we're moving over to exemptions, what we're leaving, what we're striking. I think. We need to go for a public hearing next month. We really do. I think it's going to be tight. Uh, there aren't a lot of changes we're going to make here, but it's looking good unless anybody here has any concerns, issues. Say then you've got women, because then we're going to move on to our. That was my little sound.
I think you should also.
Okay, let us go ahead and move on, um. To new business, number seven, backyard chickens, household hens. Um, want to report or give us a little, little bit of a?
I mean, I guess I can.
I mean, we've got this thing that's in our agenda.
Yes, which was. Basically from our meeting. May, because I missed June and July. This is what we had discussed and seemed to come to terms with, uh. As a group, that this was what, uh, put forth.
And the big, the big important thing and the reason why I had us put a map out here is for us to reconnect with. Where, uh, the zoning districts are that this indicates. So if you go to your map. Somewhere else. So here's map. And if you go to, uh, the RLD, which is residential load density, et cetera. Um, and if you get your little magnifying glass out, you can kind of see where everything is on here, but. It will, it, what's most important to see where indeed. We're implying that chickens could go. Um, C means, uh, conditional use permit required. When, when a conditional use permit is required, does that require that the neighbors are notified and have to sign off on this? That is how the county does it. I was just wondering.
I don't remember seeing that in the code, but I will double check.
Um. The, the disappointment I have in this, um. Is that we are not allowed to really put any conditions on this and it kind of concerns me. Um, because even though we can put in setbacks, we can put in designated, you know, footage, lineal footage as to how close to whatever setback, we could do that. But we can't put in the conditions that it is in a. Um. We can't put even that they're in, in a completely enclosed coop, can we? We can't even do that.
I, I did put that in here, but I think that it might not. It might not be able to be done through, that may have to come out of zoning and be done elsewhere.
So the only thing that we would be allowed to recommend would be setbacks.
Setbacks, the number of chickens, I think we're okay to have.
Number of chickens are okay?
That, that. I believe is going to be okay.
And location, so no front yard type, you know, that location setbacks. But we can't put anything about coops and runs may be fully enclosed or must be fully, we can't put any of that in there.
Well, I have coops and run must be fully enclosed. I think that can be in there, but I could be. I could be incorrect there. Um. A lot of, a lot of what needs to be done is, it needs to, you know, needs to be considered, needs to be considered by the town council.
Yes.
And so.
Yes.
I don't think that if, if you recommend this over to them, I don't think the town council is going to take it and just adopt it, right? They're going to say, well, what about this concern and that concern and the other concern? And then their staff is going to say, well, that's in this section and this section and this section of the code. And so. I think if you recommend this over, it's going to be to town council to decide. Whether they're going to adopt it and, and when they're going to be able to add all those other changes to the agenda. So I don't know how that timeline will work for them because I'm not there. Specific staff.
So for example, if you wanted to put anything about all chicken droppings must be placed in enclosed, in enclosed containers. Prior to composting, prior to distributing to your garden, whatever, whatever it is, the, the whole, we can't recommend that. Because that has to go into a whole nother section of the code under waste management.
That we have no authority over, correct?
We have no authority over, so I think my concern here. Is that we can't follow through on the specifics. And we don't know if they will include or not include, or how they will. Interpret what it is we, you know, the thought was. So in other words, all we can come out with is. If the setbacks, how far away from another house for a boundary, whatever, not in the front yard. These kind of things we can do as a planning and zoning group and then they have to go through and change all the parts of the code where all the other. Issues that would, that we would want to talk about would come up. So like the waste management with the droppings. Um. I would think having enclosed food, there would be no section of the code where you have to have enclosed, in an enclosed food container for.
So it would probably all. In most of the other ordinances, it's pretty much handled under animal health or their animal related ordinance. Yours is called animal health. Um, which would need to be modified anyway because chickens are not permitted through that. So if they're going, if they take the recommendation to update the zoning ordinance, they will also. Have to change. Animal health in order to allow it and that will lead to other, I'm sure that they will have other discussions and you all are residents to go to town council meeting. And express concerns regarding other parts of it.
Okay, so let's look at number one. Um, the principal dwelling shall be a single family detached dwelling. Okay, that one we know what we could put in, we could use for sure. We can say okay to that one. Coops and runs are not permitted to project into minimum yard setbacks as defined in such and such. So it's already in the code.
Eight setbacks are what you have in, for the front. Or sorry, for the side yards and then.
So I guess that would be the next question. Is that the? Um, is that the minimum that we want to have for the chicken coops is the current setback? And again, like with my yard up in, uh, over on the hill up there, my. I don't have a setback really. My property literally goes up to within two feet of the house next to me. So the question is, unless we put a. Um, a setback for me, I could literally put my coop almost, you know, well, eight feet from her window or less.
Not less, it would still.
It would be eight feet, whatever, but I mean, the point is that's not far enough away, in my opinion, from somebody's window. Because it's not like all people take care of their chicken coops and they're sweet smelling.
This goes back though to the argument of. People have dogs that are not sweet smelling. Pooping.
And they can put.
One from, like it's right under and so, you know, that's.
It is true, except that, um, with droppings, you can't always spot, either droppings are small and you can't always pick them and scoop them all up at one time. Dog poop, I actually pick up and it's all gone and, yeah, but not already dug.
Yeah, they may not pick up the dog poop.
That is, and that's true too. I mean.
I know a house over on C Street that is fighting rats quite ferociously because they're. The people next to them are not picking up dog droppings and like.
Well, this is an issue.
And so, yeah, you know what I mean? Like, these things do happen, but then you have to go through the enforcement that happened, like.
It happens with regular rat issues.
That that's happening through waste management or through animals.
And, and I do think a concern is like. Thinking of chicken droppings everywhere, and this is in, in enclosed, I mean, what we're talking about, an enclosed run, enclosed coop. That, that's where it would be, like, this wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't be free range chickens that are.
I understand that, I understand that. People, people, that's true. Um. Okay, so. Going back to number two, coops and runs are not permitted to project into minimum yard setbacks. How do you deal with my street where we don't have normal setbacks? We go like people across the street are the same way. Their house goes right up to the house next to them. And is eight feet a good enough, a good enough distance? When you have four, possibly potentially four chickens, you know, you know, and doing their thing, is that far enough away? Because when you look at. The housing of the zoning districts. Um, we have. Uh, let me see, my district is the, um, medium density area. But then there's also low density, um. I mean, I'm sorry, high density, oh, wait a minute, excuse me, high density should not be here. So we have, why do we have? So we even allow it in the high density area? Okay.
I mean, one of the reasons why we discussed in May that we were. That it seemed like we were, had landed on the eight foot setback is. There. Are so many, even with an eight foot setback due to so many non. Conforming lots and things, we were trying to make it as permissible as possible for as many people because there's relatively few people in town. That under these circumstances, even with like the eight foot from various ways. We were trying to make sure that some people could actually get them if they wanted, but. There are, even in like the high density, I'm guessing. High density is going to have very little chance of having eight foot setbacks that it's a single family dwelling.
Well, there are twenty, twenty foot. What? A twenty foot year, rear yard setback, eight foot side yard setbacks, there are going to be. Plenty of lots in the high density area that cannot fit within those.
Well, the high density is all HOAs, aren't they? The Windward Key and they're all the HOAs anyway, right? Or, or, no, wait a minute, excuse me.
Richfield and Bayview Hills are the HOAs.
But also, no, but we're talking about high density, which is the town homes across the street. If you look at HR, HD. It's really the group across the street here. They're the, the HOA. So they really, e- even though it has C on here, probably to be accurate, would have to be. NP because I know that that, uh, group would not permit it. Uh, there's also an RHD over by, um. Across, I'm trying to think of where that is exact. Oh, it's behind us, uh, the, um.
Behind Roland's, right?
Just speak station?
Yeah. Well.
Oh, how about the Highlands? You're not thinking of the Highlands?
No, no, no. If you look at RHD, it goes from the Windward Key.
Also back.
Back here, back here, behind, um.
Captain's quarters.
Captain's quarters. Thank you. I couldn't think of Captain's quarters.
Kind of doesn't matter if we say it's permitted or not in those because the HOAs aren't.
The HOA is going to strike them.
Like we, right?
That was part of the reason.
Do we know how many, like, how many literal lots would be allowed to have them?
Yeah, what, what's the number of probable?
I don't know.
There aren't many because when you look at it, none of the HOAs are allowing them because that's usually in their, their CCNRs. So if you're looking at, um. It's probably mostly just our section up here and then of course all of the RV two, which is behind.
Like West Beach.
Behind, um, yeah, across from Bia, you know, that whole area back here, RV twos. Um, now RC is the swampy area, so that's not gonna, you have a couple of houses over there. Not a big deal. There aren't really a lot of houses, actually.
A lot on Old Bayside, south, in the south part of town.
But I guess my big question is, does anybody? Have any concerns about not being able to put any more conditions on this before it gets to the town council? Or are we just going to give them a generalized blank check, make sure you put everything in there that we want to, for protection of people and animals and, you know. Are we okay with that? Usually I'm one for a lot of conditions, just because I'll make sure I, you know, I have control over it, but. You know, I like chickens. I've had chickens as pets. I mean, we will have a little bit more, um, you know, of, of. Dog barking and whatnot, because whenever dogs smell chickens, they'll bark more, et cetera. So, yeah, it's going to be a little bit more challenging to, um. To control in the town as far as noise and, and smells, whatnot. But you know what? I love chickens, so I'm, I'm good with this myself.
So I can get chickens, I can get my eggs now from you instead of from.
Being inclined to want to get the chickens. I will tell you, I, I'm one of the chicken lovers.
I mean, having chickens is also a responsible, I mean, you can't.
And it's not shit.
Not expensive.
Not at all. It's.
It's harder than a dog. Am I, am I? What do you think? You have chickens.
Lake even.
Oh, I know. But anyway, I'm sorry, what were, what were your opinions about it?
I mean, my children take care of them and, um, so they don't bother me.
Can your children come here and take care of hers?
I, I don't think.
I understand your point that we, about feeling like, oh, we want to be able to say these things, but I also think. There are, you know, checks and balances in government and that's okay, that we're doing our part, say, and I don't know, it feels like there's so much to be said about it and the. You know, and will it get picked up by them? But it feels like we can say these pieces and then. I guess at a certain point we have to be like, we have elected this town council to do their piece of the puzzle that we've only, we've done our piece as well as we can.
And also public comment. I'm, I'm really interested to, to open it up to see what the people actually want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if everybody comes in and says like, not in my backyard, then we don't do it. Because if everybody comes in and says, like, not in my backyard, then we don't do it.
A lot of us aren't going to have, aren't, are not going to be allowed.
Most of you don't really care, because you're not, you know...
Well, I do care, because I want eggs from you.
Oh, funny, oh, very funny, oh, very funny.
But it does, you know, when it has come up in public places, there seems largely it's in support, and you know, every now and then you get, but it would be interesting to see who it happens, and then that we can let the public, you know.
Then who ultimately has control? Are you saying that the town council? Because we don't have jurisdiction over certain parts of this.
We only can say, it's currently not allowed in planning and zoning, so we're saying that part we would remove, so then there's other places it's still not allowed, because they have to do that. But we're just saying, we would like to remove that level of...
It doesn't do any good if we remove it and it's still...
They don't do it, so then, like...
I have to march myself to town council and...
Like, I don't know that I meant to become the chicken lady.
You're not the chicken. Don't it now, I'm sorry.
Can I play the chicken polka, like, the da-da-da-da-da, when you come in?
The whole thing, the song, the chicken dance, we'll do the whole number, we'll make you...
And get your rubber chicken.
The town council has expressed excitement to see what you presented.
Oh.
They brought it up at, when I was here, there's like chickens, they talk about chickens quite a bit, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, then, so we've got one through five is all we can actually, um, put towards a motion, so would you like to be the motion lady as well as the chicken lady?
Uh, because I don't know that I've ever actually done a motion. It's two years, um, so I just say...
Actually, what you can just move is you can read this entire thing, is all, because that's really going to be the motion. I would like to include, um, backyard chickens, conditional use in the, you know, you can say all of that if that's what you want to do.
Yes.
Or you can just say, as staff has presented in the agenda, you could also say it that way, you can abbreviate if you'd like, so whatever.
Okay, but we're moving to pass this on, our recommendation on to town council.
Yes.
As stated here, okay.
Yeah, well, you would make a motion to present the, or to, to move this item. We would then go ahead and second it, and then we would talk, talk about it one more last time, and then we would vote on it. So then it would go to the town council, then it's their job.
And does, and does your motion have to say that it gets forward to town council, or is that a matter of course?
It will be a matter of course, but you could say, yes, and to transmit this to the town council, yes. And all, all of our stuff does go there anyway, so I mean, you know, it's just a given, but you can state that if you wish, or just say this, what you want to say right here. Unless you want to add one more thing, I don't know, did you want to add anything to this?
Nope, nope. Motion to, uh, take the backyard chicken ordinance or statement as presented by staff and to present that to town council to actually change ordinance.
Amend.
Amend, amend ordinance.
Amen the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions about this ordinance, one more time, are any concerns, issues, any changes? Okay, okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We know what Larry would oppose.
Did you mean to do that? They didn't really mean to do that, I'm s... Anyway, next, we are done with that, okay. So, number three, a review of the Coastal ZNC recommendation, we are starting, sorry, Barry, starting without you.
Okay. I have a slide presentation, do you want me to do that, or do you want me to, okay?
Yes, I would like to do it, we may have to do it again, but I don't think with this group it hurts to do it twice sometimes.
I'm sorry, one sec, how long is that?
Oh, it is eight o'clock.
It's eight o'clock, and I have to take a kid to college.
I'm sorry, how long will it take? Because it is eight o'clock and we could complete it, but it's going to be what?
I mean, it could be, it could potentially be anywhere from 20 minutes to a half an hour or longer.
Okay.
Can I give you a quick overview, which would be five minutes or less?
Okay, yeah, okay, so, for those of you who have not read this thing in its entirety, you'd probably be, get an idea to read it on the Coastal ZNC. We will be starting in full force, of course, next month, along with our public hearing. And also, we're going to bring up the home occupation, so you may want to reread that again, uh, but we are going to start with that also next month. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any issues? Nobody want to stay here till eight thirty now? All in favor? Aye. Okay, I think we're all adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.
I was like, they are moving and I'm not.
All right, so you're not driving with me tomorrow? You'll be where at? Because it starts at one, yeah, but it's better to get a little, yeah. Yeah.